All right, well, we'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Rice. Can we get the flag come up?
Let's see, does that work?
Yeah, it does.
All right, place your hand over your heart and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right. Now, obviously, this is the first time we're going to do this public comment, but I'm going to read this into the record. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Public comment cards and comments left on the county website prior to the board meeting have been compiled and made a part of the supporting materials that have been provided to the county commissioners and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during this meeting. Once at the beginning of the board meeting and again at the end of the board meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who have left a voice message on Douglas County's public comment phone line, seven seven five seven eight three six zero zero seven. I say again, seven seven five seven eight three six zero zero seven. Once a public comment period has been opened, public comment does, public comment closes, the voice messages will be played in the public and the county commissioners in the order that they were received. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played during each public comment period. Board, the board wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any voicemail is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irreverent, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of others, the voice message will be skipped to the next public comment. Public comment is now open and the public's comment phone line is now available to public comment. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's public comment phone line. After the last public comment has been played, the county's public comment phone line will be reopened to allow public comment to be recorded as the meeting progresses. Public comment is now open.
Natalie Wood for the record, I will start playing public comment.
Lynn Muzzy, M U T Z Y. I was expecting to see your message, and I'm a critic of the work from Douglas County Department, particularly call center and sheriff's department staffing. Last I heard, three deputies are quarantined. What provisions have you made to guarantee our first responder ranks are fully staffed if more of them are quarantined or struck down by injury or illness? How much emergency overtime have you budgeted? What might we have to spend to supplement emergency supplies?
There is a report on how the county will coordinate with fire and E M F. Where is the report detailing preparations and anticipated needs from area clinics and hospitals?
What's the plan to work with area doctors and nurses? What medicines do they have on hand? Which medications do they need? Your voters want to see in black and white Douglas County will pay what's necessary to activate reserves by additional emergency equipment and supplies and keep our call center and our first responder teams fully staffed. Can you see now why your stubborn insistence on continuing to fund R D A two to benefit the wealthy casino corridor might come back to bite you, to bite all of us? We're facing a completely unpredictable pandemic. Many of our businesses are shut down. We're going to lose tax revenue. Our older-than-average citizens are concerned and they want to know what sort of safety and security you're spending their taxes on. You should have scrubbed this business-as-usual agenda weeks ago. Get your head in the game, folks.
Natalie, I didn't catch the name of that person.
Lynn Muzzy.
Do you want me to play the beginning again? I know I had the volume not so great. That is the only voicemail so far. Do you want to give it a couple of minutes to see if anyone's recording?
Yep. Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I got an email from Ellie Waller that she was unable to get in, I don't know why. She was trying to leave an early message and was unable to get in.
Mr. Chair, would you adjust your camera? All we can see is the top of your head and the ceiling.
Well, that works for me. Any more public comment? It's been open six minutes or five minutes now.
Yes, sir.
No, no further public comment?
No.
Hearing that there is no further public comment, I will close public comment for this period and we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
We approve the agenda.
Second.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, the motion carries. We'll move on to approval. What? Somebody say something? Approval of previous minutes. I would point out that the minutes for the February fourth, 2020 are in the supplemental packet. But other net, I don't know of any changes, any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, look for a motion to approve the minutes of the two special meetings, the regular meeting and the emergency meeting. Is there a motion, Commissioner Rice?
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of our special meeting, February twenty fourth, February the fourth, I'm sorry, February the fourth, February twenty fifth, the regular meeting, February sixth, February twenty seventh, and the emergency meeting held on March the sixth.
Second, you mean sixteenth. Correct.
Correct.
March sixteenth. So we have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, the motion carries. Now we do Douglas County presentations. I will read the presentations into the record and if somebody wants to read the presentations, they are in the minutes or in the packet. But we don't, we can't make a presentation of them. We'll consider this as the presentation. So for presentation-only ceremonial presentation of proclamation, two zero two zero P dash zero three three, proclaiming the month of April, 2020 as National Autism Awareness Month in Douglas County. This is sponsored by Melissa Bluster and Steve Decker. The proclamation itself is in the packet. Are there any questions from anyone? Any comments? All right. Then the next presentation is ceremonial presentation of proclamation, two zero two zero P dash zero three four, proclaiming the month of April, 2020 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Douglas County. This is Jen Foranzy, Family Support Council of Douglas County. Any commissioner want to make a comment? Commissioner Ingles?
Do you have any stats on the sexual assault awareness in the county? I know they've had stats on domestic violence and things of that nature and it's, it's something that should be addressed and made aware of, but I just wonder if they had any stats.
Traditionally, they do have stats, but this is just for the proclamation. If you'd like to have them make a presentation, then we can schedule that also.
No, that's okay, I was just, that would, it's something that would be just curiosity. I know it's a problem, especially now. Well, that's more domestic violence, I guess. There's an ongoing problem in the state because of the people being quarantined or staying at home. Anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, and then the third presentation is the ceremonial presentation on proclamation, two zero two zero P dash zero three five, proclaiming the month of April, 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Douglas County. Again, Jen Foranzy, Family Support Council of Douglas County. And again, the presentation or the proclamation is in the backup data. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, well, consider it done. Mr. Rice, okay. So we'll adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. And the sheriff is online. So we're now a board of six. And for possible action discussion to approve the onsite retail beer and wine liquor license for Minden Pizza Factory represented by owner Jason Daly. Jason Daly signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Minden Pizza Factory is located at seventeen fifty-eight U S Highway three ninety-five North Suite E, Minden, Nevada, eight nine four two three. Captain, but I think it's the Honorable Under Sheriff.
Thank you, sir, Under Sheriff Ron Elgus for the record. Yes, sir, I'm going to, the attorney had to be out, so I'm going to go ahead and read this. Is that good?
Yeah, and Mr. Nelson has a question after you read it.
Actually, not a question. The owner of this restaurant is a tenant of mine, so I just want to disclose that and say that it won't have any effect on my vote.
All right, thank you for the disclosure. Now, moving back to Under Sheriff Ingles.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Daly has completed all the proper paperwork. He's completed all the proper paperwork and we're not contesting it. We are asking that his $200 fee be mailed into us so that we can process it that way due to the viruses going around.
Of course, he can't open either. So, different. In, since the sheriff's with you, I was wondering, there was a notice that you put out concerning off-sale or off-premise sale of liquor. That has to be in their license, correct?
Correct, so they, they would have to get a different liquor license if they wanted to serve alcohol outside and off-site. So that's a different, and they can do that, but it's kind of moot right now.
Okay. Does everybody understand the difference there? Commissioner Rice? He's muted.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a question. Ron, the, I've written the paper that the folks in Washoe County and in Clark County are waiving the off-sale license requirement during this period of that they can continue to sell their pizza or sandwiches or whatever and send a beer with patron. Is there anything that we're looking at along that nature?
I'd give the sheriff the opportunity to respond on that.
So I believe that the liquor board would have the authority to waive that as, as part of our county code. If we wish, we might want to hear what ADA Ritchie has to say about that, but I think that that would be a liquor board decision if we wanted to do that, I believe.
I would interject that we'd probably have to bring it back to do it in the next meeting. But go ahead, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Chairman Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Yes, liquor board could waive the requirements to allow, I guess, off-site liquor sales. You would need to agendize it and have a discussion.
In the liquor board, right?
As a liquor board.
Okay. So, Mr. Rice, are you requesting that we do that?
I think it would be a good idea. I know that many of our businesses are really hurting right now and as, as long as it doesn't come in a open container, folks can get home with their food and enjoy a beer with it. I think that that might help relieve some of the financial burden on our businesses. So I'm thinking that maybe at our next meeting, we could bring that back.
Okay, our next meeting is the seventh. Is it possible to get it on that agenda?
Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. No. The next one you could make would be the sixteenth.
That would be fine with me. Okay, Sheriff, do you have an objection to the discussion on it?
No, I do not.
Okay. All right, is it possible to have all the commissioners not muted so they can speak up when they need to?
Natalie Wood for the record, yes, we can unmute all five commissioners.
Okay, I think that's probably best. I see that Commissioner Walsh is still muted.
She overrode me.
Are there any other comments on this application? Seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion of approval.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move to approve the onsite retail beer, beer and wine liquor license for Minden Pizza Factory as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries six oh. Thank you very much, gentlemen, thank you, Sheriff, for your time. I will adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. We'll move on to the consent calendar and I, I want to pull items L and M, I think it is. Check. Yes, L and M, M is, can be discussed with L. But we would need separate motions on those. Any questions or comments? Any other items to be pulled from the consent counter? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion on the consent counter.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the consent calendar as presented by this items L and M.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? No nays, the motion carries. Move over to the admin calendar. We pulled items, I pulled items L and M. And so we'll hear those first. I, I pulled them because I think it's really important that we have a presentation on the admin calendar of where we are on the budget. I was glad to see this is, is here and, and I think the movement of the funds is also important. So at this point, I'd turn it over to Ms. Willoughby, but I'll read it, read both of them into the record so we can jointly discuss all of them. Again, we'll have to vote on them separately. Correct, Mr. Ritchie?
Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office, that's correct.
All right, so item L for possible action, approve the quarterly financial report for the quarter ending December thirty-one and December two thousand nineteen. And item M for possible action, discussion on adoption of resolution two zero two zero R dash zero three six, which augments Douglas County fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty budgets in various funds by sixteen million, five hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, as noted. Ms. Willoughby? You have the floor, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cates?
If I may, I'd like to make a few comments before we turn it over to our CFO.
Please do.
So item L is for the quarterly financial report ending December thirty-first. I, I understand the concern employing these items is to hear a little bit about how we're responding to the COVID nineteen situation and its impact on our budget. I just wanted to let the public and the commissioners know that Terry and I have been working on this since the crisis started and in particular, since the governor's directive to close nonessential businesses. I did put out a memorandum last week to all the department heads and elected officials. And if you indulge me, I'd like to read that into the record.
Please do.
The COVID nineteen pandemic is widely anticipated to have significant effects on the global, national and state economies. The measures to curb the spread of COVID nineteen instituted by the state of Nevada and others will have a disproportionate impact on Nevada's hospitality industries. Douglas County depends on this sector for eleven percent of its gross regional product and twenty-three percent of its jobs. There is broad consensus that a national and global recession is in progress. This will have an immediate impact on our most volatile sources of revenue. If the decline is prolonged, we'll have a significant impact on all county revenue sources. Therefore, we must anticipate and prepare for a decline in county revenues by developing a COVID nineteen financial response plan. This means making tough decisions to maintain the financial health of the county. Some measures we must take now and some will affect next year's budget and beyond. Our CFO, Terry Willoughby, will develop a formal detailed response plan. In the meantime, this memo will serve as a starting point for our response. Effective immediately, all vacant positions are subject to a hiring freeze. The Internal Review Committee may grant exceptions on a case-by-case basis. However, exceptions will be granted with reference to funding and to the Federal Department of Homeland Security's guidelines for essential critical infrastructure workers. Effective immediately, department approval authority for purchases is reduced from ten thousand to five thousand dollars. Our chief financial officer will approve requisitions between those amounts. All nonessential purchases should be ceased immediately. Essential purchases will generally be limited to those directly related to COVID nineteen response, other emergencies, per contractual obligations for the minimum continuation of essential county services currently in place. The Internal Review Committee may consider exceptions. For the fiscal year, for the FY two thousand twenty twenty-one budget request, the Board of County Commissioners will be asked to approve the final budget without any supplemental requests. These requests may be considered during next fiscal year depending on revenue forecast and the state of the economy. The Finance Department is currently reprojecting revenues for next fiscal year. We are consistent with our peer jurisdictions in Nevada in taking this step. We anticipate this exercise will result in projected budget deficits, necessitating budget reduction proposals. Further instructions will be forthcoming. Additional review will be made of transfers from the general fund and in capital improvement programs to identify savings in the next fiscal year. I enact these measures with much regret and despair. Within weeks, the fiscal environment went from strong tailwinds to tumultuous hurricane that threatens our prosperity. While we hope for the best, we must plan for the worst and be prepared to weather the storm. And I just want to point out that we have a budget meeting scheduled for the seventh to get into more detailed discussions about next year's budget. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Willoughby.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Cates, Ms. Willoughby.
Thank you, Chair, Terry Willoughby for the record. This report was as of December thirty-first. It was prepared after we closed the month of December, after we had the audited financials. And as noted in the report, we were ahead of our projections at that time. We had a strong economy, everything was going well. Room tax in particularly, our initial, the initial revenue projections were a little low and so we anticipated coming back to the board with an augment this year. We were going to wait and hold off on that for current year revenue. I'm working on projections for remainder of this fiscal year, but it's, this is a very unusual situation and it changes every day. We just got the extension yesterday from the governor that he's extending the closures through April thirtieth. So it really is a very unique time. It's not like the Great Recession, although it could be on, you know, last longer, but it could be, everything goes back to normal. So I'm working with a lot of my colleagues in other counties and across the nation and working on how to plan in these times of uncertainties. So I'm, as you know, I'm very fiscally conservative, so Patrick and I have been working on a plan to address both the current year impacts as well as projecting this out if it continues on the next fiscal year.
So are you going to make a presentation on where we stood as of December thirty-first?
Oh.
Item L?
On item L, yes, we were ahead of our projections for property tax and for consolidated tax. We were slightly ahead of last fiscal year, which are those are the true, two major revenue sources for the general fund. And then also for room tax, we were significantly ahead of projections of where we would be at December thirty-first. And expenditures were either in line with our projections or below projections at that point.
Okay, and room tax, which you're forecasting now is going to be lower. Is that going to have an immediate effect on the budget or is it going to be one that's going to happen in the next budget cycle?
At, at this point, I believe that there will be minor impacts this year because we had budgeted so conservatively to begin with. So if you budget five thousand dollars and we expected to get ten thousand, but we're really going to get eight thousand, that's kind of a picture of what we look for, for room tax.
Well.
So we're still ahead of projections, but I don't know what the total impact this fiscal year will be.
Okay, if I remember correctly, the figure is about three million for room tax specifically was the expectation. And
That's correct.
And what do you think that the immediate situation will be with room tax? I would think it would go to zero at this point for the next two months at least, right?
So at the end, by the end of February, we had almost collected a hundred percent of our annual budget for room tax revenues. So that's the good news. Obviously, it depends on how long the casinos are shut. If, so right now, looking probably about sixteen percent impact because that's about two months worth of revenue. And that's consistent with other agencies. South Lake Tahoe is using about the same parameters as that.
Okay.
So I don't expect that we're going to be less than what we budgeted.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Ingles?
Ms. Willoughby, everything was going along quite well with the economy and our situation here in the county. And then there was just a precipitous just decline nationwide. Have you had enough time to see when the decline really hit the county?
I have not because we don't have sales tax figures yet. The latest figures as far as actual collections that were posted on the state's website were January. So we're waiting to see, kind of get some of those numbers. I have had conversations with the State Department of Taxation as far as their revenue estimates for next fiscal year, especially for, for the consolidated tax. And they are not planning on revising their revenue estimates beyond what their initial revenue estimates were. They feel those are conservative estimates and so they were still projecting some growth.
So it's possible that we were okay through the first quarter and a real hit came in April or right at the end of the first quarter?
I would expect we'll see some, some impact in March collections for sales tax because that's when it started. I would expect we'll see some um, some impact in March collections for sales tax because that's when it started. But then it's going to continue on through April, which we won't see that until really, we won't see the real data and probably till June.
Thank you.
Uh, another point to keep in mind is that it, it's not the first quarter and second quarter. It's actually third quarter and fourth quarter. Um, uh, to dovetail on what Commissioner Ingles is talking about though, is it possible that you can get us figures that are at least through the third quarter for our April seventh meeting?
Won't have everything posted by then, um, but I'll try and get as close as possible.
That, that'd be good. Very helpful.
I can get at least some things, but some things available.
Okay, Commissioner Nelson.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Willoughby, I was wondering if you've got any read on what bonds are doing at this point?
Um, they're pretty unstable right now, so uh they're initially, they, well, they stabilized now, but initially there was a lack of um confidence in the market, so a lot of people weren't going out into the market. But that seems to have stabilized now and there's um some federal aid coming to agencies for um municipal bonding.
Okay, yeah, I heard on the news this morning, there was a large company that did a bonding in November and it was a plus of two percent. They got four billion dollars this morning and it was at eleven percent. So just to let you know, it is pretty volatile.
That's correct. And things change, but I understand there's going to be um an inclusion in the next stimulus package for um municipal bonds specifically.
That's, that's the one we're most interested in right now.
Correct.
Uh, Commissioner Walsh, did you have a comment?
Uh, just a couple of comments. Terry, um, as I kind of understand what you're saying is that uh we're really not expecting to see an impact on our budgets until December twenty one. Is that correct? I mean.
Well, we will see some impact this year. I don't know how much that's going to be. But we will, as Patrick already mentioned, we are already curtailing spending for this fiscal year, freezing positions, so we expect to be able to manage that.
And the, and the impact, that probably would not be on the property tax revenue, but it would be on the consolidated tax revenue. And actually, in, in March, we'll probably see a spike in sales tax revenue because everybody went out and bought everything on the shelves that month. What do you say?
We'll see. I, it depends on what they're buying and how much it costs and are they buying things that, some food items don't have sales tax on them. Just have to wait and see.
Thank you.
Along those same lines, um included in the C tax is a real estate transfer fee. Um, and um, do you have any feel or will you have uh any forecast on how that impact uh is going to happen to us? Uh, are, are sales continuing now or not? And if so, do we have a, a, the, what I think is inflated real estate tax uh transfer fee? Um, and, and would that have a increased or decreased impact on, on our budget?
Um, I can't speak as to whether people are still buying or selling. I don't really, I know that there's still new construction happening, so, because I live in a new trap and they're still building. And those houses are all sold, so that's going to still happen. Um, I, when working with the State Department of Taxation, they feel their numbers were conservative. And so we're going to continue to monitor that through this fiscal year and make any adjustments.
Well, we do have the president of the Nevada uh Real Estate Groups uh in, as a, as a resident of Douglas County, Brad Spires. Perhaps he could provide some, some data that would show what impact, if any, it had, it's had on our real estate transfer fee. I, I don't imagine.
Yeah, I've been looking at some data and it's kind of hard to tell because, you know, mortgage rates are very low, so there's a good thing. But then are people going to be uneasy to
Buying.
But I think housing is still going to be in demand in Douglas County, so, but we'll wait and see what the data says.
Okay. Okay, yeah, um, any other questions on the, on the presentation for December?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mister Cates?
Uh, I just realized the statement that I read into the record was actually a draft. Uh, sorry about that. A little embarrassing. Um, I will submit the, the final memo uh for the record is in substance, it was essentially the same, but a little bit of different wording at the end.
Okay. Um, a, a, any uh comments or presentation on the sixteen million dollars in item M?
Yes, um, I can comment on that. So primarily, these are, um, they were purchase orders that were encumbered in the prior year. They rolled over into the new year. And so this is merely moving the budget with it from the prior year to the current year, as well as capital projects. So as you know, we budget for the entire capital project upfront and if they don't, so maybe a project would have been, say, ten million the first year and they spent five million. So then we would roll five million over into the new fiscal year. We did not allow any new capital projects out of these augments, so nothing new. It was purchase orders or existing capital projects that had not been completed.
A, any new monies? In that sixteen million, like an increase in, in revenues from uh uh T O T?
No, those were not brought. We had originally, these are all strictly from adjusted opening fund balance. So when we did the budget, we, for example, just using round numbers, say we estimated being, getting a fund balance of a fund was five thousand and then our audited number is ten thousand. We augment that difference of the additional five thousand into the budget for the current year. But it usually is already encumbered or it's a capital project that wasn't completely expended.
Okay, and Commissioner Walsh?
Yes, Terry, in the resolution, it says resolution augmenting the Douglas County uh twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year budget. Can you say augmenting for opening fund balances to clarify?
That's what these are.
I know, but it doesn't say that in the, in the resolution.
Okay, I'll make sure that I add that language in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, I had a discussion with the county manager on this and I've had a discussion with you on this previously about augments versus transfers. And
Correct.
In another item on the consent counter uh dealing with IRC, they talk about the difference between an augment, which is new money, and a transfer, which is reimbursing or transferring money between funds.
Well, no, a transfer, so we can't transfer between funds. It's, you just can't. So a transfer is, say I have five thousand dollars in pencils budgeted and I want to transfer to a, a different kind of office supply within my own budget and within the same fund. That's a transfer. An augment is increasing, it doesn't change my overall budget. That's a transfer. An augment is increasing a budget. So the only time we can augment or increase a budget is if we have additional fund balance or if we have revenue that's greater than anticipated.
Okay, so um bear with me on this one. A, another item is on the Scott Morgan's um um senior center that they refurbished. Right? When I was discussing this with Mister Cates, uh, I remember that when we approved that, what we approved was a transfer of funds from indigent fund to complete that, that building. Um, in the way that the item is uh presented, when you read it, it's, it talks about uh using greater than anticipated savings. Now, and, and in that case, they call it an augment. Is A, is that correct use of the term and B, um, it was my understanding that we were going to say that any uh greater than anticipated savings would come back to the board. The board would then look at our um June thirtieth or January or July first uh direction that we had unfunded uh priorities. And then we would fund those priorities with the greater than anticipated because they're all supposed to be one-time funds.
So this is a case where this was, they had, and this is why this one is done separately. This was greater than anticipated fund balance. And it was an augment. Um, they needed additional funding for this senior center project. I thought was beyond the routine purchase order augments that I was preparing. So that's why it's presented as a separate item, so that you would have the opportunity to review that and have that discussion. So was it adding additional money to existing project? Anything like that would have been pulled off regular augments.
Okay, so um getting back to it, we didn't get the opportunity to look at the other priorities. We, we just approved by virtue of the consent counter, those monies going to that without looking at what our other priorities were in uh July of, of two thousand nineteen, which is what we were trying to do, was fund those, those additional programs. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I personally would like to see how we're going to fund those previous ones that, that we ended up with as priorities and I, I forgot, maybe twenty of them that we didn't fund. And how are they going to be funded this year and are they going to be carryovers? And then at the end of the, the twenty uh twenty budget, which is twenty twenty one, are we going to be able to take monies that are savings or greater than anticipated and fund those prop, those priorities?
Correct. And so one of the items that has not come forward and most of the unfunded items were from the general, county's general fund and that has not come back to the board yet. So we can certainly wrap that into that larger discussion.
Okay. Good. Is that progress?
I'm trying.
Okay, okay. Uh, board members, any other questions?
No.
Okay. All right, um, then uh if there are no questions, uh, we'll uh take item L. Uh, and do we have a motion on item L?
No. I would move to a quarterly financial report for the quarter ended December thirty first, twenty nineteen.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson, a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? No nays, the motion carries. Five oh. Item M, discussion on adoption of resolution two zero two, I don't need to read it. It's already been read in the record. Um, do we have a motion on item M?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt resolution twenty twenty R dash zero three six, approving Douglas County's fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty budget augments in various fronts from the adjustments to opening fund balance for audited fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen balances as presented.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Rice. So we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Rice. Did I say that correctly? Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, the motion carries. Five oh. Now we'll move on to the administrative calendar and I'll read into the record. Um, item one, human resources for possible action. Discussion on the adoption of ordinance two zero two zero dash one five six five, a text amendment to Douglas County Code chapter two point zero five improper governmental action and whistleblower protection to incorporate mandated legislative changes required by Assembly Bill uh two seventy four and incorporated into NRS chapter two eighty one by the Nevada Legislature. This is the second reading. Ms. Lang.
Thank you very much. Chairman Penzel, Commissioner Wendy Lang for the record. As you've read into the record, sir, this is the second reading of an ordinance and this ordinance is incorporating legislative tax changes that were made to NRS two eighty one point six eleven that was adopted in twenty nineteen. Uh, the changes that are being introduced today to our code include prohibiting the placement of false information in personnel files, prohibiting an employee or official from using his or her authority to interfere or present, prevent disclosure, remedying retaliatory actions, requiring local government bodies to extend the same protections under Nevada law to employees, some revisions to appeal hearing procedures and the required annual distribution of a summary of whistleblower protections. And subsequent revisions will be required to policy two hundred point thirty three, which we'll talk about in a few moments, depending on how this item is addressed. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Lang? This is the second reading. Seeing none. Um, we'll uh bring this back to the board for any discussion. Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash one five six five based on the information presented in the discussion of Board of County Commissioners.
Right, we have a motion and do we have a second?
Second.
I think Mister Ingles got in first. So uh we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner uh Ingles. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, the motion carries. Five oh. Item two, for possible action, discussion on proposed amendments to the Douglas County Administrative Policies and Procedures Section two hundred point three three, appeal by whistleblower for retaliation to comply with recent revised Douglas County Code, NRS chapter two eight one. Ms. Lang, presentation.
Thanks again, Chairman Penzel, members of the Commission, Wendy Lang for the record. The proposed amendments to this policy are reflective of the revisions made in NRS and the county code now uh relative to appealing actions which were allegedly taken in reprisal or retaliation due to the disclosure of improper governmental action. The policy revisions are attached in the agenda backup, um, both in redline and final formats for reference. And again, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Lang? Okay, seeing none. Any discussion on this?
If not, I'll make a motion.
All right.
I move to approve the amendment to Douglas County Administrative Policies and Procedures, Section two hundred point three three, appeal by whistleblower for retaliation as presented based on the board's discussion and public comments, which there were none.
Second.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Is that you, Mister Walsh? Okay, um, so we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson and a second by Mister Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? No nays, motion carries. Five oh. Thank you, Ms. Lang.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, District Attorney for possible action, discussion on adoption of ordinance two zero two zero point one five six six and ordinance amending Douglas County Code, Chapter two point five zero, Douglas County Law Library, to be consistent with the Nevada revised statutes, statutes, Chapter three eight zero, modifying the process by which payments are authorized, moving the Douglas County Law Library to the Douglas County Public Library and all other properly related matters. This is the second reading, Mister Ritchie.
Thank you, Chairman Penzel. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. This is a change to our Douglas County Code to bring it in line with revisions to NRS. Uh, we also currently have the Law Library on the second floor of the Justice and Legal, for the JLEC uh Justice and Law Enforcement Center. Uh, the hours of operation for that building are not the same as the library. The space is much smaller in the JLEC. It's been proposed that we move the county law library into the uh main Minden library. It'll have expanded hours. Uh, one of the things that we hope will, uh, will achieve through this is to have um some economies of scale, maybe save some money because there are uh duplicative uh legal resources in both the county law library as well as the Minden library. Um, the main purpose of this though is to provide greater access to the public to the legal research resources that the county offers. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Mister Ritchie? Seeing none. Any discussion on this item?
I think it makes perfect sense to, to move.
I think it makes perfect sense to uh to move the library to the uh public library. I I can see where it will um create less traffic for the uh for the justice building and uh uh open the library for greater uh public use.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Commissioner Ingles?
Uh Mr. Ritchie, how are you guys doing on space?
Well, uh Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. As the board is aware, there's been um a number of studies done for the JLEC. It's outlived its usefulness. Both the deputies, the courts and the District Attorney's Office, as well as the constable's office, utilize the JLEC and um additional space is needed. Freeing up this space will give a a little bit of additional room. If any of you have been up to the law library, it's kind of a little closet right now. So it won't free up a lot of space, but whatever space we can free up, um I'm sure the courts will appreciate.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? All right, then we'll be looking for a motion.
I'll move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash one five six six. Based on the information presented, the request of the Douglas County Law Library Board and the Board of County Commissioners discussion.
Second.
So uh we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson, a second by Commissioner Walsh. And any discussion? Commissioner Walsh, you had a point you were gonna make?
So I I was just wondering um Mr. Rich's comments about the the size of the law library closet. But we did free up a lot of space once we moved the civil division out of the JLEC building, is that correct?
Chairman, if I may, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. We did free up some space. Um uh there's now a conference room that we can all actually sit around up on the second floor. Um I think the courts and uh the sheriff's office still have some space needs.
Thank you.
Further comments? Seeing none. I'll call for a vote on the motion by Commissioner Nelson and seconded by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? No nays, the motion carries five oh. Now we'll move on to the county manager for presentation only reports, updates for county commission members concerning various boards and our commissions that they may be on or a member of or a liaison to or a meeting function that they have attended. Uh any reports? Commissioner Rice?
Yes, I uh I was uh in attendance at the uh TRPA meeting where the uh project for the uh Event Center was approved by unanimous vote by the entire board of uh the entire governing board. So that is uh the first hurdle that uh uh has been taken care of and now we move on to other venues.
Mr. Rice, could you describe uh what the board is? How many members are there and um wh- where are they from?
Uh the the board of uh the governing board is uh representatives from uh the state of California, state of Nevada, all of the uh counties that uh touch Lake Tahoe as well as uh members of uh the um League to Save Lake Tahoe and um other uh appointed officials. So there's about looking around the room, about sixteen uh voting members, if I remember correctly.
Okay, and they all voted in the affirmative?
They did, unanimous. In the like this, including the league, by the way. So that was uh that was a very important vote.
And is that normal?
Not really. No, they'd uh a lot of work had been uh put into this uh and there was a lot of uh uh give and take uh of um movement to uh I I want to say appease the uh but to uh make them more comfortable with the uh with the building and the site. And uh the adding uh an additional fee so that they could have uh free uh transportation within the corridor and to reduce uh traffic and vehicle miles traveled. So I would say it was it was unusual and uh it was uh something that uh was um worked on very, very uh hard by a a good number of people.
Okay, thank you for your report. Any anybody next? Couple. Oh, Commissioner Ingles, go ahead.
Well, this is the report. Are the sheriff still online?
No.
No.
I just wanted to uh ask them how their patrol guys are doing and holding up under all this. But that's another issue.
Well, I think it's a good issue. I think um uh maybe for the April seventh meeting, we can get some kind of rundown from the county managers to how all these offices are functioning and what particular issues they have. I know that we will be discussing the COVID nineteen uh economics which would include overtime and and that kind of thing, but uh we have a lot of people uh working uh in a lot of different areas, uh including not only the sheriff as first responders, but uh the fire department, Melissa Blossers on two different committees and going back and forth. Be kind of interesting to hear a rundown of who's doing what to whom and and how that's working if Mr. Kates could and do that, just provide a report. I don't know if he can squeeze that into the uh information on the economics. Uh Commissioner Ingles?
I agree. I think you're you're spot on. Um the sheriff's deputies have a unique position where they have to go out and wrestle with people hands on and and I mean, it's just uh it's really tough what they face every day. And uh I just hope everybody's holding up okay. Thank you.
And thank you. I think your concern is well placed. Um I would also like to bring to everybody's attention the uh census and the response to the census. And I would hope everybody is trying to get constituents to to respond to that that census. I uh also would point out um that uh our clerk treasurer sent out a letter concerning um the voting and how that's gonna work. Uh I don't know if she wants to make a comment on the letter or the voting or the dates. But uh certainly you're welcome to make a a comment if that's appropriate at this time um in terms of it's, you know, giving us information. Do you care to? I I'm putting you on the spot, but you do well on that. Um I can't hear you. There's a voice on.
Kathy Lewis, now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Kathy Lewis. For the record, um we are still, pardon me, my tone a little bit colder. We are still working with the Secretary of State's office and the clerks on finalizing dates, but we will, it will be a mail ballot election for the primary. Every registered voter, active voter will receive a ballot in the mail. We're hoping around the first week in May, we'll send those out and um and deliver the mails. We will still have same day voter registration. We'll stop early voting and election day open in our building in the commissioner chambers, but only for same day registrants. If you're an active voter, already registered voter, um you'll vote by mail or with a paper ballot. But we'll have more information while the frequently asked questions um and um more information soon coming out.
And will the FAQs be on your website or are you gonna publish them separately?
Um both, and I'm gonna um ask if Melissa wouldn't mind pushing that out through her channels too. So we'll um do as much um pushing the information out there as we can, talk to the newspaper, work with Melissa and get that information out.
I would offer uh the opportunity for you to do some explanatory information during our meeting on the sixteenth, if uh if you wanted to do that. And of course, Mr. Gates will coordinate that. But it would be.
I think. We'll definitely have more answers by then, so I think that's a great idea. I can outline everything.
Okay, be great. Um and I also wanted to point out um that uh the Economic Vitality Program Champions Report, which was uh in twenty twenty, January twenty twenty, was informative, but I think now um as I've I've asked Mr. Kates to uh ask uh the Economic Vitality Manager to switch over to become our SBA coordinator and um and work issues for our businesses and getting money. I mean, I I gotta believe that out of two trillion dollars, even Douglas County should get some money. So I would I would like to see, you know, kind of a uh what we're gonna do to get money to our businesses, how we can help them get the money. I know I know obviously it won't come through us, but how that would work and who's gonna get money and how we can help them is, I think, important for the businesses. And uh Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, um Ms. Lewis, I was wondering if you can give us an update on the RDA two referendum. I know you've been working on that and I was wondering if you have an update on that.
Sure. Kathy Lewis, clerk treasurer for the record. We have been, it was submitted last week. It's been a long couple of weeks. So I can't remember the exact date. I think last Monday. Um we are almost through the verification of the signatures and they look good. It looks like it'll be a petition that will have enough signatures um to bring forward. Um there are some deadlines. Once we certify it, um I think we bring it to this commission within thirty days. So probably that first um meeting in May is when I think that'll happen, but um but the petition looks good.
Okay, thank you.
And just for further clarification, if you bring it to the commission, what is the expectation? The commission files it, sends it, approves it, disapproves it? What was the commission responsibility?
Um I I don't have all those answers, but um it is a petition by the people that have been signed to go as a question before the before the people in um for the pri- for not for the prime, for the general election in November. Um but we'll have all those options outlined for you. Um I think I'm meeting with um a representative in our district attorney's office tomorrow to talk about what our next steps are.
Okay. Thank you. And this would come up in the November election, correct?
Definitely in the November election, right. It can only go on a on a primary, on a, sorry. Only can only go on a general.
A general election, yeah, okay. Okay. Any other reports, questions, comments? Okay, then we'll open this for public comment. Ms. Wood, do you have any public comment?
Natalie, look for the record. Um I do have a few that are coming through. I have asked the Amy mute everybody just so that we don't have any um looping going on and background distraction, but I will start playing them.
My name is L E E L L I E Waller, W A L L E R. This is not the time to be committing thirty four point two five million in RDA two dollars to an event center. During this national and worldwide crisis, we need to take a step back, reevaluate our budgets and determine the best use of our funds. We also need to take a step back and wait for the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, the Tahoe Transportation District and the Federal Highway Administration to improve their Main Street management plan. This will be in a couple of months. Necessary funding of the Main Street program coincides with achieving some of the proposed mitigations for the event center and the mitigation success. Identifying that funding and sources is critical. I listened and participated during the five plus hour webinar hosted by TRPA on March twenty fifth. It included the event center and Main Street management plan. The thirty four point two five million for redevelopment funds are supposed to assist all of Douglas County in correcting blight. Is the Mount Blue parking lot blight really? Is the casino corridor blight really? The Chateau Proposed Event Center, a hole in the ground due to RDA funds being stripped in California, is blight. The proposed event center will cost a hundred plus million. No casino dollars are being spent on the actual event center that I could find. Edgewood donated the land, not a casino, through a mitigation measure mandatory parking at the casino's private enterprise. The casinos will collect those dollars. The four dollar minimum event fee charge doesn't come out of their pockets either. The TRPA, TTD, FHWA Main Street Plan, that could also affect our tax dollars due to unknown mitigation. Examples, the transportation improvements required to build alternatives and development for the mixed use site, conflicts that could exist with utility infrastructure, gas, electrical, et cetera. Free micro transit, which isn't really free. What Douglas County tax schools will this come from? Douglas County owning a county road. The new Main Street will be under local control owned by the city of South Lake Tahoe and Douglas County. The the existing right of way for this segment is US fifty between Pioneer Trail and Lake Parkway, the new Main Street. According to funding, TTD has funding to complete the environmental review process, but nothing else has been slated or booked. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Next one?
Hello, this is Natalie Yanish. My last name is spelled Y A N I S H. I'm a resident of Tahoe Township in Douglas County, and I wanted to comment on the virtual meetings. Um I appreciate your efforts to continue to conduct county business via virtual meetings for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and uh also for accepting comments via email, website and on phone messages. Um I realize this is a really difficult time and everybody is trying to navigate this new normal, as it were. And we're all trying to continue to move forward with important items and issues. It is imperative that the county business be moved forward as planned so that when we recover from the pandemic, we are not behind. And rather, we have proceeded with efforts to get the economy back on track. I hope that Douglas County comes out on the other side of COVID nineteen with a plan for success and without having to come frozen in time or a deer caught in the headlights. Please do take care and my best to you all and the hardworking staff. Thank you.
Say next.
Mr. Chair and Board, thank you for this opportunity. Uh I just wanted to inform you that uh we are have had several requests from the public to shut down the vacation home rentals. Uh this is Eric Gavon, uh Fire Marshal for Tahoe Douglas for the record. Um and he really, it's not within our preview. We do the safety inspections and then we uh, you know, make sure they're safe for our our fire response and for fire safety. Uh we will continue to do those inspections. Uh you know, as deemed appropriately, we're doing a video uh remote video inspections with them. So uh we wanted to make that uh aware to you and then also the fact that um we had a little difficulty getting into this comment line and I did send a written comment in as well. So uh thank you again for your time and really the authority having jurisdiction would be the um the permit process through community development and of course to the Board of County Commissioners, uh whether or not those permits are uh suspended. And uh that would be something that would be entirely up to the board, but we are set up to make sure that the inspections are happening and people are staying in these uh uh vacation home rentals, as well as we've had a lot of uh people staying in their vacation homes up here. So uh thank you again and uh we wait for your direction on the meeting further on that. Thank you.
Say next.
My name is Kirk Walder, K I R K W A L D E R. These are my personal views. I want to thank the members of the board for their efforts in conducting today's meeting. Thanks also to the county employees, particularly the county manager, for his leadership in the current challenges facing our county. I hope our county leadership will not yield to alarmist viewpoints or those who fail to recognize the long term strengths of Douglas County. We should deal with facts such as those provided by CFO Willoughby, not speculation based on unrelated anecdotes. In particular, it's misleading to note that a recent bond offering was offered at two percent and was subscribed at eleven percent. Would it be surprising to learn that bond was offered by Carnival Cruise Lines? Douglas County certainly has a brighter future and better management than Carnival Cruises. The pandemic will not be easy to endure, but the virus can't degrade the natural beauty and resources that will. that will hopefully soon attract many visitors to Douglas County. Thank you.
And that is all that has been received.
Okay, uh, do you want to give it another five minutes or? Do you have the line closed, open? What's the status?
It's still open, but I don't have anyone calling in.
Okay, then I'll conclude public comment this time. Uh, any further comments from commissioners? Seeing none. I'll uh, I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. Um, I appreciate all the efforts of everybody trying to get this going. Thank you Natalie and thank you Amy and Mr. Kates. And.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Stay safe. Thank you.